...order at 7:00 PM and state that the notice of the regular city council meeting was duly posted. We will have the pledge of allegiance by the Elkins High School Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. O. O. E. A. O.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
M. E. O. O. We have two presentations today. We will start off with our Fire Prevention Week. Missouri City's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Missouri City residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. The 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape: Plan and Practice Your Escape", effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now, therefore, I, Yolanda Ford, on behalf of the council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week. So Chief Campbell.
Chief, would you like to make some comments?
Mayor, council, sir, I'd just like to thank y'all for formally recognizing this week. It is a 365-day-a-year job for us, and although this is for one week, it is a small drop in the bucket for what the guys in the Fire Marshal's Office, the gentlemen on the fire trucks, men and women on the fire trucks, do year-round, just to prevent fires and incidents from occurring. So I just want to thank you again, and y'all be safe out there.
The American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions, sound planning, and planning implementations to make the quality of our settlements and environment. And we recognize the many valuable contributions made by a professional community and regional planners of the city of Missouri City, Texas, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Therefore, I, Yolanda Ford, on behalf of the council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim the month of October, 2019, as Community Planning Month. Planning Department, can you guys come up? Not all at once.
Thank you, Mayor Ford, and to everyone, happy National Community Planning Month. This is an opportunity for us as planning professionals to represent a line of professional career in which we focus on communities such as Missouri City, who is a thriving, which is a thriving community that has great planning principles. As you know, we do have a comprehensive plan, which is live and active. We ask that you take a look at the comprehensive plan and look at those areas of the community that affect you. So we, as the community planning department, are focused on this year theme, which is infrastructure that benefits all. And by that, we mean we're focused on transportation needs, housing needs, broadband, internet, technology. We do know that there is technology such as Altima's cars that are being designed for, we need to think ahead, what Amazon is doing to most communities. Those things are being looked at and focused on. So we ask that you all join us in recognizing this month as a month and opportunity to focus on planning as a community. So thank you very much. Also, Jennifer Thomas Gomez is here from the department. She's the Planning Manager, Thomas, white behind me, Planner One, Planner Two, excuse me, for the community. Thank you for this opportunity.
We will now have public comments. As a reminder, as a reminder, you please state your name and address, and we are not able to comment on public comments. Jeanette Quimby.
Jeanette Quimby, 11814 South Willitt. I'll circle, and I'll try and speak fast, since I only have three minutes.
Yes.
Okay. Right off the bat, with the attorney's comment that legally, there's no reason for you to turn this down. On the other end of the spectrum, legally, there's no reason you have to approve it. It's already zoned, so I just want to put that out there to you. Again, this has been told that it's going to be a benefit to Missouri City. On his own videos, it's a benefit to the city of Houston, not to the city of Missouri City. You can watch him on YouTube. That's what his comments are. He's a benefit to the city of Houston. Our concerns are still the same, as mentioned earlier, concerning traffic, lights, increasing our footprint in Missouri City as more industrial, commercial, and concrete instead of homes. Most of the residents would be happy to have homes built there. We talk green space, but we would happy to see residential homes built there. That's what it's zoned for. They want to build homes on there, they can build homes and rent them out. Again, this gentleman bought the property in March. He's asking for a zoning change on this with concept plans. A lot can change on concept plans. You make the revision now, he can do whatever he wants to it in six months, as long as he meets your approval for code enforcement and code and planning. So that means that three-story parking garage he mentioned at the city council meeting on September 3rd, that he did not mention to the homeowners at our meeting. He could build it, because he's going to pass it by code. So there's no issue there. He can have his parking garage. He can put the parking on top of that retention-detention bond. He can do whatever he wants, because he's gotten the zoning changed to build a church. We want homes. I keep stressing that. The impact, there was a traffic survey performed in our neighborhood this week. This timing of being placed on the agenda one week from our neighborhood meeting to a traffic survey that was put in place on Tuesday, that we contacted the city. The city had no idea who was out there. And yes, I was a nosy neighbor. I stopped, pulled over, I said, "Who are you? What are you doing in my neighborhood?" He says, "My boss told me to be here. My boss told me to do this." I go, "Who does your boss work for? What is your company?" "Well, my boss told me to do this." They were taking pictures of the traffic. We had no idea, the city had no idea who this was. It could be with the new zoning, it could be with something else. But again, the secrecy and transparency with what's coming to the neighborhood. There's a veil of silence from what's being presented to you, what was presented to us. I do agree, there were members in support of them at the homeowners' meeting, but it was not in the volume that this gentleman and his church are presenting themselves. I just, the comments that his attorney made about talking to the city attorney concerned me. The comment that the pastor made on his own video, where he said he came to the city before he bought it, asked the attorney, "Could this happen?" The attorney said, "Not a problem." I'm here thinking, "Excuse me? You would just grant a blanket, 'not a problem' to someone, instead of saying that there are a lot of hoops you have to go through for approval?" That it makes me wonder, then, from the standpoint of the city, why would you ever tell someone buying property it will not be a problem to get your zoning changed? So again, please listen to the residents. You see that we're here in attendance this evening. We will watch the agenda every week and be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other two forms I have are for the agenda item, correct, Maria? Okay. So I will call the other two residents up during the actual Agenda Item 7A1. Now we'll have staff reports, city manager announcements.
Good evening, mayor and council. I hope everyone had a nice weekend. Past couple of weeks, there have been a large number of things going on, ranging from Oktoberfest, our MCTX Job Fair, doing business with the city, pre-national night, out kickoff, and a whole host of other activities. And I want to thank everyone who attended one or more of these events, and want to give special thanks to our city staff who helped make these events possible. Mayor, over the course of the last several years, there have been a large amount of discussions related to our U-turns improvements for Texas Parkway. And I wanted to just give the citizens a quick update on where we are, because I know I've received a large amount of calls over the course of the last couple of weeks, thanking the city for the improvements that have occurred. So I wanted to just share with you and the community where we are in that process. The existing pavement material along Texas Parkway currently is asphalt. So it was always the intent that we extend the pavement shoulders at select locations using the same material, which we have done. Previous repairs, and I know we get this criticism from citizens, that TechStop would put it out, and when there was a heavy rain, it would wash away, it would erode. In this case, that material was aggregate materials, which was a temporary fix and not one that was actually permanent. Current pavement material that has been placed in those turnabouts is asphalt with the compacted base, which previously was not placed in those repairs. This should alleviate any further rutting along the shoulders at these key locations. This effort was part of, well, let me go back. I think it's important to note that the work being done for the U-turns on Texas Parkway and Parkway are not part of the beautification process. This was something in response to citizens' outcry and concerns related to their vehicles being damaged as part of the turnaround process. So in talking with TechStop, they do not have any additional funding for full reconstruction or for other enhanced pavement improvement options along the corridor other than our partnership for the beautification, which is our $2 million initiative that is forthcoming. There are some curb repairs to be addressed within this corridor in the next few weeks, and at that time, that should wrap up the scope related to the turnaround. But we're very happy that TechStop worked with us to be able to get to remedy some of the challenges that citizens have expressed, and they've been calling, saying, "Thank you, city," for that. I also want to remind residents that the Development Services Department changed the hours of operation for the Planning and Inspections Departments for an office. The new hours are now 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, so staff can use the extra hour to follow up on residential requests. As relates to the city, we recently earned the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for the 31st consecutive year. In keeping to financial transparency, we take pride in constantly proving, providing budgets of the highest quality. And I want to take this time to recognize Elena Portis and Bertha Alexander. I don't know if Carissa's here. If you guys will please stand. Continuing excellence in budgeting is important. So if you guys would. Residents should also remember that although the weather is slowly starting to cool down, it was a beautiful day outside today, we are still in hurricane season through November 30th. And staff is closely monitoring all of our weather forecasts to ensure proper preparedness. We want to always remind our residents to go to missouricityready.com. That's www.missouricityready.com. I would also end, Mayor, by saying that we are excited about the upcoming groundbreaking of our Veterans Memorial. We intend to break ground on November the 11th, with the expectation that by next summer, our memorial will be completed. So we ask the community to please come out and join the groundbreaking of our new Missouri City Veterans Memorial, groundbreaking on November 11th. That concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? A second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We move on to Public Hearing 7A1.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of approximately 13.36 acres of land from R3 to Family Residential District, MF2, Multifamily Residential District, and SD Suburban District to PD Plan Development District Number 108. Describing said 13.36 acres of land, regulating and restricting the development and use of property within such PD Plan Development District, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
All righty.
Hello. Good evening.
Hello.
So I have a quick presentation, and this presentation is just going to go over the staff recommendations. The applicant does have a presentation that can give you context into what it is that they're seeking to develop here. So this is the subject site on the screen. This is right there, as Lake Olympia transitions into Parks Edge. Olympia Estates is being constructed to the east of this property. The Mustang Bayou Drainage Facility is, a portion of that is included within this property. And then that is to the east of this property. As I did with P&amp;Z, I want to give you some context on the zoning in the Palmer Plantation, Lake Olympia area, because there is a little portion of this property that retains a multifamily zoning designation. So just to put that into context as to how that got there and what this zoning case is doing. So this is Palmer Plantation, what became Lake Olympia, was zoned in the early 1980s. And the original plan for that Palmer Plantation included portions that were going to be multifamily, some commercial, LC2, which is the neighborhood commercial area, as well as various densities of residential. So you see the R4, the R3, which is two-family patio home residential district. You see the LC2 here. The portion that's outlined in red is the area that this subject site eventually came out of. So as Palmer Plantation took shape, portions of the site started to transition from those initial, original zoning categories to single-family residential. So they started to be rezoned over a course, over a period of time, from LC2, from R4, from R3, ultimately to R2. And then again, the area that is the subject of this zoning case is still outlined in red. In 1991, the Sunrise Bay portion of Lake Olympia, which is directly to the west of this section, started to, the rezoning for that started to take shape. And so you kind of see the outline here of that subject site and how it's in odd shape. You can kind of see how that started to present itself. And so here, the outline in red, the subject site has a zoning of R3 and MF2. And then there's a portion of the Mustang Bayou that's not shown on these maps. So again, the subject site is out of this larger area. 1994 really established the shape of this subject site with Sunrise Bay, Section 3, being rezoned from multifamily and R3, two-family, to the R2 to allow for the development of that portion of Lake Olympia. And so it left this piece in generally the shape that you see here in red that retained the R3 zoning, two-family zoning. The portion that is hashtagged at the bottom is the multifamily zoning that was retained from the early 80s. And then the Mustang Bayou tract retained the suburban district, the classification, zoning classification when land is annexed into the city. And then 1997, it looks the same. In 1999. So the proposed development, the applicant has submitted this proposal to rezone the property from the stated zoning designations to allow for a mixed-use development to include a commercial along the frontage of Lake Olympia Parkway, and then residential. Their plan for commercial would include approximately 1.7 acres. Their plan for residential would be for patio homes. And the land plan that they've laid this out, utilizing some of the constraints on this property, so you see the dark green area outlined here to, to the east is a portion of Mustang Bayou. And again, that is within, a portion of that is within the subject tract, so that restrains or restricts how much developable land is available within this area to actually develop. And then you see a portion designated at the bottom for potential drainage or detention facilities for the new development. The applicant has proposed a schedule. It's not a phasing schedule, just a general outline of what their anticipated development might be if this PD is approved. So I'm going to go through the recommendations that are included in the ordinance and in the report. Again, the proposal is to allow for a residential area and commercial area. The residential area would generally follow the R4 district regulations. The commercial area, the developer has proposed specific commercial uses, and that's the list that you see there on the screen. But that list is also included within the ordinance. Generally, it's office uses. It tracks with the LC1, which is a very low-intensity. Convenience stores are permitted, would be permitted within this list. But generally, what you see are offices, single-scale-type facilities, not educational, but less intense commercial uses. These would not be commercial uses that you would see even at the intersection of Vicksburg and Lake Olympia. These are not commercial uses that would be permitted on Highway 6. On the Height and Area Regulations for the commercial, the applicant originally proposed LC3 with a cap on the maximum height at two stories and providing a minimum setback from Lake Olympia of 25 feet. And side yard requirements for the LC3 district are not defined by the zoning ordinance, but rather the building and fire codes. So the P&amp;Z recommendation is to disapprove that proposal, apply the LC1, because again, the LC1 district was designed for commercial uses, less intensity, that are closer in proximity to residential areas. So what that would do, it would restrict building height to a maximum of two stories or 35 feet, which is comparable to what the developer had proposed. But it would provide a larger setback from Lake Olympia, a minimum of 30 feet. It would establish side yard setbacks, a minimum of 30 feet, and establish a 15-foot rear yard. And this is for the commercial portion. Heightened area for the residential portion, this generated some conversation. So this graphic may be hard to see, but council may want to ask questions on this one. The residential area, the applicant's proposal, is to apply the patio cluster or patio home district standards, which would provide and provide a minimum 10-foot rear yard and also provide zero-foot side setback. The applicant can go into detail as to the types of products that they're trying to locate with these setbacks. But generally, that R4 district allows for a reduced setback when a lot backs onto like a common area or open space that's also part of that same section or that same subdivision. So the P&amp;Z recommendation is, considering the constraints that they have with Mustang Bayou, with the linear shape of the track, to allow for that deviation, the reduced setback, for only those lots that don't back up to a residential lot. So that would impact six lots. The six lots where the red line is shown on this graphic immediately back up to residential lots in the Sunrise Bay section. So the recommendation is, is for any lot other than those lots, that they be permitted to do a reduced setback. For those lots, the recommendation is to apply the R4 standards, which would be a minimum, I think, 20-foot setback. And then allow the zero-foot lots, which the R4 district does do. But what the developer has proposed would give more certainty, so you don't run into an issue of a lot becoming unusable if homes are built from opposite ends of the street coming in. And then where it all comes together, you have a lot that no longer can be developed on. Building and architectural design regulations, again, there is a qualifier in the ordinance pursuant to the recent legislative changes. However, other than those legislative changes of what the city can no longer regulate, the recommendation is to continue to apply the architectural standards contained in Section 7A. Pitch roofs, design details to create shade and shadows, complimentary design throughout the development. And that's the recommendation coming forward. On the landscaping recommendations, the developer's proposal, where the red solid line is pointing at, off of the Lake Olympia Parkway, a 25-foot landscape, open space buffer, and associated landscaping between Lake Olympia and the side or rear of a residential lot, as well as an eight-foot-tall masonry wall where that residential lot abuts that open space buffer. For the commercial area, the developer proposed minimum 10-foot landscape buffer and associated landscaping along all streets and access drives, as well as a minimum five-foot landscape buffer along all property lines. Generally, the P&amp;Z recommendation is to adopt all of those regulations, with the exception of along, along the streets, along the Lake Olympia frontage, apply the city standard, minimum 20-foot transitional buffer yard. Yes, the city standard 20-foot instead of the reduced 10-foot there. Parking regulations for the commercial area, the applicant's proposal is indicated there. They were going to apply parking setbacks, which is consistent with, you know, certain planning guidelines and development guidelines, and also provide designated parking. However, because of the buffer yard requirements that won't allow for parking within that distance to a property line, it's, there's no need to adopt additional minimum parking setbacks in this case. So staff's recommendation is to adopt the bicycle requirements. The city does have a pedestrian bicycle plan, and there's a lot of conversation in terms of pushing multimodal ways of transportation. The design of the commercial, less intensity, may give the opportunity for residents within that area to be able to access the commercial area in alternative ways. So the recommendation coming forward is to adopt the bicycle parking standards. All other district regulations, as discussed, sign regulations, fence regulations, trash disposal, all of those would be consistent with either the LC1 district for commercial areas or the R4 district for the residential areas. The PD does recommend that outside placement, storage, sales, services be prohibited for any of the commercial properties. That is not in the original version of the ordinance that you had. You were provided earlier today a version two of the ordinance, and that contains the prohibition for outside placement, storage, sales, and services. And so I've been advised to advise that that would be the ordinance, the version two, would be the ordinance that you would vote on if that is how you want to proceed with this item. There's also residential builder guidelines that have been provided and that are also attached as an exhibit to the ordinance. And those guidelines cover garage, certain garage standards above the city's minimum standards, certain fencing standards, architectural standards, again, specific to the residential area, signage regulations as well. And so that is all that I have in terms of the P&amp;Z recommendation. Before, if you- Before, if you all want to hear from the applicant, before you do that, I do have additional protests that was received after the packet was completed. And it doesn't change the percentage that you have there. It's still at 5% in terms of the protests received from property owners within 200 feet. But this was just so that you have this additional protest that was received.
Just as FYI for just the community, how many were in the 200-foot buffer?
So total protests on the original, the posted packet was, there were 19 protests received. Of that, I think there were about five, four or five that were within 200 feet. What's being passed out right now only adds one additional house or one additional lot. The couple that lives there both submitted to a separate protest, but it represents one property.
Okay, okay. And you said the owner is here?
The applicant is here, yes.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Parker with Meta Planning and Design. And I am the applicant for this proposed PD. So Jennifer did a pretty good job going over everything. So I'm going to try and just hit on a few of the specifics of the project rather than go through everything again. But just a refresher, here's the project located just south of Lake Olympia Parkway. As Jennifer mentioned, we're proposing a mixed-use PD where we'd have a portion that would be the commercial and a portion that would be residential. As it's currently zoned, it would be permitted to have duplexes within the development. And originally, that was something that my client looked at doing, but wanting to kind of be a little bit more compatible with what's in the immediately adjacent subdivision, which is a typical single-family. We started to look at doing patio home development. And so that's the plan that you have in front of you. In doing patio home, it reduces the total number of units and makes larger lot sizes that are more consistent with the area. But there were a few other factors that we needed to consider because there are some pretty distinct constraints on this site. As you can see, it's obviously a very unique shape. We've got the water treatment plant site that has additional boundary configurations that come into play. And then also with the existing detention and the need for the onsite detention for this facility. There's a pretty limited space to actually work with for development on this tract. And so in looking at what would be the best use for this tract and also to try and minimize any impact to the adjacent properties, we're looking at doing some commercial right along Lake Olympia with very limited allowed uses. And then again, the patio home development for the residential component. For the property itself, because of the detention that is already existing and proposed, about 41% of the total acreage for the tract is going to be in open space in some form or another. And limited number of lots on this development, they would back to existing lots. There's only about seven lots on what we're proposing that would be immediately adjacent to the existing development. So this slide, I just kind of quickly go through what the proposed setbacks are. As Jennifer mentioned, we're using R4 as the base zoning for the residential component. And with that, we would have a 10-foot front yard setback with a 20-foot for garage. So there'd still be room for driveway and off-street parking. And then because it's a patio home, we're requesting the zero and 10-foot setback. So it would still be 10-foot separation between homes, but it would be allowed to have zero on one side. It was briefly referenced that part of what we're including in this document would be some assurance on where the zero-foot lot line would be required. So on the plat, when this is submitted, it would dictate what side would have that zero-foot setback. So you won't run into an issue down the line where homes end up being built next to each other. And then there's an issue with having that minimum separation. So we'd be dictating that in advance of any development. And then we're still proposing the buffer, the 25-foot buffer along Lake Olympia, which currently we've proposed much more than that before any lot begins, but there would be still that minimum. And then the buffer between the commercial and the residential. We are also including builder regulations, which would provide a requirement that there be a minimum of a two-car garage, minimum five-foot wide sidewalks, there's a fence requirement, minimum square footage for the home, 1,500 square feet. And also that all the homes would be required to be 100% masonry on the first floor. For the commercial, oops, not too far, component of the project, we have received all of staff's comments and obviously what P&amp;Z recommended and were willing to comply. The intent all along had been to have a lower-impact commercial development that would be compatible with the residential around. So we're proposing, you know, limited height for the building. In the next slide, I'll show you some renderings. But proposing pitched roofs, some architectural components to the commercial that would fit in better with the character of the surrounding areas. And then the additional buffer yards that were described earlier. Some of the architectural standards would be elevations that are interrupted by offsets and changes in building materials, contacts, textures, consistent theme if there were to be more than one building on the site. And then again, compliance with all the parking and setback requirements. As for the uses, we took the list of the LC-1, which is already more limited than all your other commercial uses. And then we trimmed that down even more. So we've primarily limited it to office or medical-related uses. So it's accounting office, architecture office, bank, dental, legal services. So just to name a few. But it's going to be pretty low-traffic, low-impact as far as the amount of, or the hours of operation, that type of thing. So trying to be compatible with residential, both within this development itself, but also the surrounding areas. And then here we have just some preliminary renderings of what the commercial would be with, like I said, the pitched roofs, awnings, proposed landscaping. And just to quickly go over the timeline, this is all, you know, initial plans, but would probably be over the next three to four years that it would be developed with both the commercial and the residential components. So in reviewing what we've received from staff and then what P&amp;Z proposed, we're happy to, you know, accommodate a lot of the changes we see the need for them. There is one item that we would like to request your consideration on. As I mentioned, with the site, it's a tricky site to develop. And with that, the need for that reduced rear setback has a pretty big impact on the number of lots and the size that we can get. So staff and P&amp;Z have requested that we do the 20-foot along those six slots that are on the existing development. We're requesting the 15, which is what is permitted under the current zone on this property. Originally, we'd requested the 10-foot on all of them. But we do understand, you know, the concerns with the existing residential and everything. So if there's a way to kind of try and meet in the middle, just because we're really working within some tight boundaries that we can't be flexible on. The property lines are all established and have some challenges with some of the angles that they're at. So that's the only thing that we would ask that you consider is to allow just the 15-foot instead of the 20 on those, just those six lots. And then still providing more of a setback than what we would, than what was originally requested. But I'm available if there's any questions. It's just kind of a quick overview of what we're planning here.
Ms. Parker, you mentioned six, and I count seven. That one large piece there right around the cul-de-sac, a few of them.
So that would side to it, so it wouldn't fall under that rear. But because of the shape of the lot and everything, it would probably be more than that 10-foot that would be required. But based on what the ordinance is, speaking just to the rear, it would only affect those six. So that's what that is.
Before we start with questions, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Sorry. Motion to open the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead. Any questions?
On the commercial spaces, how many commercial spaces have you all identified or potential?
Well, on the current site, we're showing a couple of buildings. But a lot of that might be modified.
Open the public hearing.
All those in favor for opening the public hearing? All opposed? Go ahead, council member.
So some of the commercial is going to have to be relayed out based on some of the new setbacks. So I don't have a final answer on what that would be. But with it being only a 1.7-acre site and the buffer yard requirements and everything, it's going to be pretty limited.
At one time, the commercial was thought that it might be a service station type of operation?
Like as in a gas station or something?
Yes.
That would not be permitted on this site.
Okay, so.
So convenience store, but not, no gas pumps.
Okay.
But that's really the only retail-type use that would be permitted.
Okay.
Do you guys feel comfortable being able to fill that space with LC-1 because of its limitations?
Well, I think that, you know, there's understanding that you have to be cognizant of what's around and what residents', you know, concerns are. And so we, you know, we feel like this is probably the most conducive. And there is a fair amount of, you know, office and service related with bank or that type of business. So I think that, you know, initial studies have been done and they feel that, you know, there is that opportunity. The size of that portion of the property is pretty limited. I mean, you couldn't really even put lots in there. So commercial is the, you know, the highest use for that portion. So we aren't having lots running onto a busy street. So we're trying to kind of find the middle ground in it all. But, but yes, I mean, the idea would be to have a use from what's listed so that we are able to use that tract.
You indicated that this might be like a four-year project?
Right now, just from start to finish, we're anticipating four years for the.
What would be first, commercial or residential?
Let me go back to that slide. So we would start with plotting and then site design for, probably commercial would go first and then the residential would be later.
Jennifer, do you know offhand the other office building that's off of Lake Olympia Parkway? What is the zoning for it?
LC-2.
LC-2, okay.
The buffer on the six lots, you say we're asking for 20, but you're asking for 15?
Yeah, originally, we were asking for 10. But we understand what the concerns are. It's just we're working, like I said, it's a really tight space. So I'm trying to kind of find a middle ground, you know. So if we could do a 15, which, like I said, the current zoning on this property would allow for that 15-foot. And so we're just asking for that to be maintained.
And if you went 20 feet, that would what?
If it were to stay at the 20 feet, we, the applicant, or my client has mentioned that they may have to kind of put a hold on the PD and look at developing as is currently allowed, which would be with the duplexes, because it would impact the number of lots.
What is it currently zoned as?
R4. R3, I'm sorry. But duplex, two-family homes would be permitted.
Right. And so if the 20-foot is imposed on it, we'd have to kind of look at it again. But right now, they're concerned that that would trigger a lot loss that would then make it, they wouldn't be able to develop it in a way that would be the most effective. So they would maybe have to look at just doing what is allowed onsite now and not do the PD process. But as part of doing the PD process, you know, we've tried to provide things like the builder guidelines and other additional elements that would help to make it compatible with the area and also take into some considerations, things that wouldn't be required with the base zoning. So we're, you know, trying to be good neighbors and accommodate where we can. But, you know, we need to also be able to develop, so.
All the green area that's shown up there with your, where it backs up to existing homes, what is that?
So that's the proposed onsite detention for this property.
I'm sorry?
It's the proposed onsite detention for this property to meet the detention requirement. So that portion would not be developed with homes based on this current plan. So it's about 1.7 acres right there that's proposed for the detention.
So would you come in and clear-cut all of that that's there? I think most of that now is.
Yeah, I mean, it would be based on, you know, what's needed for the drainage study. But if they're putting in a detention pond or something, there would definitely have to be some cutting. But it wouldn't be developed with this and streets back there.
You'd make a lot of, those people there happy if you left some of the green space there.
Right, and that's why, you know, as it is currently proposed, there's really only six lots that back to it and one lot that sides to the existing development of the 34 lots. So about half of that length of the lot, of the tract, would still be, remained undeveloped, at least as far as homes go.
Jennifer, what's the setback for the existing neighborhood?
For Sunrise Bay? It's R2, so interior would be 25 feet. The rear setback, I'd have to look up. I don't have that off the top of my head.
I think it's 15.
15.
So 15 and 15, 30, okay.
So at 15, you can get 34 homes?
Yes.
At 10, you could get, of course, more, right?
Well, we won't, we're not looking at 10.
I know, I'm saying, but you would be able to get more.
Potentially, I mean, it's still, it's, there's only so much flexibility. But increasing it beyond the 15 is where we're really going to start.
So 20, you lose what, eight?
I mean, we'd have to reconfigure it. So the width is the problem, to have the street and then still meet the lot depth for the lots on either side of the street. A five-foot cut into that then starts to hit, there's, you know, the minimum size of the lot that we'd still have to maintain. And then just to be able to have a home that's going to hit the minimum square footage requirements that we're proposing and some of those other factors. So it's just, part of the problem is that that boundary line has these jagged turns in it. And so there's a portion of the lot where, you know, it might cut in a little bit. So that 20-foot then means it's cutting in even more to what's developable, so.
And you'd probably just move away from doing patio homes altogether at 20?
Well, yeah, I mean, if we were developed under the current zone, we'd be able to get that 15-foot. And that would allow for a two-family, so a duplex, which would then get us, you know, more lots. But like I said, you know, the goal is to try and be consistent with what's there and trying to find a middle ground to be able to accomplish all of that. But we're limited on flexibility just because of what's already existing.
That buffer, whether it's 15 or 20, who maintains that? Is that green space?
That would just be the rear yard of the homes.
Oh, okay.
The open space in the community would be maintained by their HOA or with their restrictions that are created.
So like the detention and the landscape buffers would all be maintained by the development?
Jennifer, there were a couple of protest letters. One spoke about flooding. I noticed the detention is in the back of the area. How does that handle the commercial development in the front?
I'm going to default to the city engineer.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And if I may just remind everyone that drainage is an aspect of subdivision and not zoning.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. At this point, we've not seen a drainage study. I think at this conceptual plan, they're dedicating land for detention. Detention can be in the front or into the rear. But typically, how it's done is the side drainage is graded such a way that it goes into the detention. And in this case, I probably envisioned that it would outfall into the channel which is next door. That's why they've kind of placed the detention next to the channel because water drains into the pond and then into the channel. I think that's the reason I see that they can't configure like that. But it doesn't matter where the detention is as long as there is enough capacity to mitigate the impacts. That's the key thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have two people who've signed up to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Michael Wells, please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Michael Wells. Thanks for hearing me out. I live at 1607 Morning Dew Place. And as I read this, if I'm reading the map correctly, it looks like my house. The northern, the most northern patio home is going to end about halfway on my fence line. And so, you know, we were here last month, my wife and I. We're both teachers. We, you know, we fell in love with this house for a lot of different reasons. It was in the middle of our jobs, it was a place we could afford, wasn't too big. And I just feel like this is all kind of changing. And I appreciate the fact that the company is. And I appreciate the fact that the company is, is trying to do something that, other than just throwing up a bunch of duplexes, so, you know, I appreciate that. And as I understand it, I think our lot is also one of the six that it's being requested that there's a 20-foot backup or whatever it was called, yeah. So, you know, I said a lot of these things last month and it sounds like it might be kind of a moot point. This sounds like a foregone conclusion for the most part. But, you know, we bought this home, if we had bought the home, or, I'm sorry, let me back up. If we had known that we were gonna be staring at the blinking lights from those TV towers that are along Fort Ben Tollway, which are now covered by those trees, we probably would not have bought this house. If we had known that we were gonna be staring at that water treatment facility, we probably wouldn't have bought the house, you know? And the map is maybe a little bit deceiving. I mean, I could, not that I've done this, but I could throw a rock and hit those water treatment facilities. They're pretty close to our backyard, but right now, they're covered by trees. And I think, you know, like most of the other people that bought houses on the same side of the street, we were all under the impression this was a green belt because there's nothing back there but a bayou and those water treatment facilities. And I think there's a big difference between building subdivisions that they have further down Lake Olympia and then cramming in a bunch of homes there. So our main concern is drainage. And I just wonder how we're going to be insured that the water is not going to drain away from those houses and into our property. So that's, I think, a major concern that everybody has. The, you know, when those trees disappear, we're probably gonna be staring at blinking lights. There's gonna be two-story patio homes staring into our backyards, into our bedroom window. And beyond that, I guess the other concern that I have is the light pollution from the commercial facility. So I'm wondering, you know, at the very northern end to the, to the, to the west of that water treatment facility and the, and the commercial property, I'm wondering how, exactly how big that green spot is going to be? Whether or not there are gonna be trees that are left there? How close the parking lot?
Mr. Wells, you've reached your three-minute time limit.
Okay, is associated, or how close that parking lot is gonna be to our house and what the lighting situation is gonna be? Because I would like to have some semblance of nighttime.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Richard Pedd? Please state your name and address.
It's a privilege for me, thank you very much. Will be moved here from Plano. Six years ago, my wife and I found a house. It was the advertising, when it says on it, "Baxantre Treat Nature Reserve." We were so happy. Nature Reserve, which was created over 40 years ago. Trees are 40 years old and younger, of course. And, and I want to read something. I just wrote it down and it could have been said before, but please bear with me because I think somewhat or somehow we seem to miss one item. And I shall read it to you. Today, I picked up your final report, it said "final" on it, on the view at Lake Olympia, and I am concerned. And the reason I am concerned? The report speaks of commercial and residential studies. Somebody did those studies, plus recommendations. Somebody got together and made recommendations for this. Now, I assume this is not a done deal yet. Hear me out, please. Nowhere do I read about the negative studies that you will find on this ordinance will have an effect on existing properties. When you look along an island, if somebody was talking about reducing it to 15 feet, well, guess what? I'm 19 feet on my side away from the fence. You add another 15 feet to it and I'd be 34 feet away from my corner of my house to that new construction. The main problem that we have is drainage. We were fortunate, the last hurricane that poured through, we didn't have a problem. That green belt, as we had known it, absorbed the moisture and it took it down the bayou. And now we have bigger bayous, wider bayous, and it's such a blessing. Now, we're concerned about flooding. And we're concerned about retention of rainwater and so on. Now, I made a note here, it says 40 years ago, Weiss Council created a Sunrise Bay at Lake Olympia. Reserved this property because of topography. Bayous on two sides, one side and the bottom end. Well and pumping station on one side with live electrical pumps. And I'm probably about 180 feet away from those pumps.
Mr. Pedd, Mr. Pedd. Mr. Pedd, Mr. Pedd. Hello, Mr. Pedd, over here. Yes, you've reached your three-minute time. Thank you. You've met your three-minute time.
You've met your three-minute time. So everybody who speaks, the council has three minutes and you've met it. You've met your three-minute time.
Too long?
No, you only have three minutes, three minutes. Every resident has three minutes only and you've met that time.
The orders lady as well?
Can you repeat your question?
That spoke here, she had only three minutes?
Everybody that's speaking to council has three minutes.
Okay, all right, all right. No keeps, thank you very much. Well, actually, I guess, ladies and gentlemen, this, my three minutes up. Would you tell me where, where am I? Where am I?
Thank you. Are there any other concerns or questions? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing, second.
All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Is this a one reading?
Two.
Two, so there'll be another reading?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I got a little stunned by that last... One quick question, Jennifer. What's the noise that comes from that pump station? Are there pumps there or is there a significant amount of noise coming from there? Do we know that?
I, I don't. Sasha, do you have anything on that?
Councilmember, I'm not very certain. We can find it out and get that information to you.
Okay.
It's a water station, it holds water. Possibly there are pumps, but I don't have confirmation. But we can get, we can research and get that information to you.
Also check, go, I'm sorry. Check on the lighting also, what kind of lighting requirements there are, if any?
I can answer that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Sasha. Um, on the lighting for commercial, so the regulation is on the flow of light. So you'll be able to see the light, but the flow of light will be restricted to the boundary of that commercial property line. So the flow of light cannot extend beyond the boundary of that commercial property line. But the change will be is you will be able to see, you know, that there's light out there. It will illuminate. But the regulation will prevent it from being able to flow onto the residential portion in this planned development district or an adjacent residential area.
I guess my question was, is there any lighting that's required at the pump station? I mean, we're talking about noise. Is there, is there, you know, any lighting requirements that's there?
For the water, the water plant?
Would you check on that? Okay.
Any other questions? So is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
I move to approve the ordinance.
Is there a second? So, because there's not a second, the motion dies? So what, at this point, what happens, E Joyce?
There's no longer an item to bring forward, so...
Second reading.
Okay.
There's no second reading.
Okay. So we will move on to Agenda Item 7B1.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, continuing an interim procedure regarding the administration of plans and plating rules, providing for repeal, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency.
All righty, Jennifer.
Now, this ordinance just extends the interim procedures that you adopted on September 3rd. Staff is still working through the subdivision ordinance and other applicable development codes, infrastructure design manual, the plating manual, to make necessary changes. And that will bring forward in the coming weeks, coming months, for your consideration. So this interim ordinance would allow us to continue to operate under those interim procedures, extending it out through the month of October into November to give us time to bring forward a permanent rule change for you.
Okay, so we can open up for a discussion. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm making a motion.
So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor? All opposed, motion passes. So how long is the state giving us to, I guess, get all this done?
We are, we are under the new changes. The changes went into effect September 1st.
Okay.
So this gives us the ability to stay in compliance with the state requirements while we work through the details of the subdivision ordinance.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Put motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? All opposed, motion pass. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Eight, there's no appointments. Nine, A, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the purchase and installation of playground equipment in Rome Park.
Mayor and council, last year, almost at this time in November, we had the opportunity to build a new playground at Rome Park. This was phase one of a two-phased operation. We received a grant last year from, from Blue Cross Blue Shield and Kaboom to build that first stage. And since then, when we designed, when we designed that playground, we knew we had a really large footprint. And we, we planned to continue to fill that footprint with playground equipment. In the meantime, we were able to get some park zone funds in that park zone, specifically from the senior living facilities there right next door, the Gallon Jubilee, and wanted to use those funds to complete the playground at Rome Park. I've included some images of what that playground will look like in your packet and if you have any questions you might have.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
So we're gonna have a little discovery green soon.
Hopefully. It's, it'll, it'll be, it will definitely be a destination playground. This is the type of playground where people will travel from all over Missouri City to come to. This, the specific, one of the specific structures, if you've seen the pictures, the tallest one, was just recently on, on display at our National Recreation and Parks Association Conference and won Best of Show. We're excited, we're gonna have the first one in the area. And it's, it's a sight to behold, we're excited.
Nice job, Jason.
Cool.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Will I be able to come and do some work again?
Yeah.
No, this is turnkey.
All right.
We're not putting it in.
It's cold and rainy, we'll call them.
That's right.
Like last time.
You just didn't like the work I did.
Just wanted to go in quick.
So we have a motion and a second? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, 9B, consider authorizing a reimbursement of Century Land Holdings of Texas, LLC, as set forth in the audit report dated March 31st, 2019.
Good evening, mayor and council. Again, this is a development project wherein the city entered into an economic development agreement with the developer for construction of a portion of Independence Boulevard, Segment 1. The timing was such that the developer was moving on and he needed access to the development. And the developer had dedicated right-of-way for the Independence Boulevard project, which is a CIP project that has Fort Bend County Mobility Bond funding. So the city entered into a development agreement wherein asked the developer to build a small section of the roadway which has since been built. And the majority of the Segment 1 project is complete. He's now seeking reimbursement for the section of the project that has been built. The city invoiced Fort Bend County and we have received the funds. We're just reimbursing the developer for the expenses that he incurred. If you have any questions, I'll be able to answer.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed, motion passes. Consider authorizing the execution of a letter of approval for Care EMS, Inc. to operate a non-emergency ambulance service. Chief Campbell?
Good evening, mayor and council, that's exactly it. Per the state statutes as well as the city codes. They're requesting to operate a non-emergency service.
Is there a motion?
I move that we authorize, this is Jen Ida.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, are there any questions? Okay, all those in favor? All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
10A.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, providing for the assessment, levy, and collection of ad valorem taxes for the City of Missouri City, Texas, for the tax year 2019 and for each year thereafter until otherwise provided, providing the date on which such taxes shall be due and timely paid, and authorizing an additional penalty for the collection of delinquent ad valorem taxes in lieu of recovering attorney's fees.
All righty, go for it.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council. The proposed tax rate is 63 cents, which is just below the rollback rate of .639873. This is made up of two components, the maintenance and operations and debt service rates. The maintenance and operation rate is .46639. And debt service is .16361. This rate is higher than the effective tax rate, but lower than the rollback rate. And that required two public hearings. Those hearings were held in September on the 12th and the 23rd.
Is there a motion to approve the rate of .466387 for the maintenance and operations component of the tax rate?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the rate of .163613 for the debt service component of the tax rate?
I move that we approve the rate of .163613.
All those in favor? All opposed, motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the property tax rate by the adoption of a tax rate of .1630000, which is effectively a 4.319% increase in the tax rate by record vote? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
So now we must take a record vote. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Emery?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Boni?
Yes.
Councilmember Rose? Councilmember Parrish?
Yes.
That is it, motion passes.
B. An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Missouri City, Texas, general obligation and refunding bonds, Series 2019, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $14 million, levying a tax and payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase contract, a paying agent registrar agreement, and an officer's pricing certificate, approving the official statement, approving the engagement of certain professionals in connection with the issuance of the bonds, finding and determining that the... finding and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, and enacting other provisions relating thereto.
All righty.
Okay, good evening again. These, this amount includes an issue of general obligation bonds from previously authorized bonds, which total seven-point-four million dollars. This will come from the 2003 and 2014 authorizations. The projects are included in the fiscal year 2020 budget. They were approved with the capital improvement program. They include in drainage the Canjolosi Detention, American Legion, and Buffalo Run. Those are drainage projects. Facilities, we have the expansion of public safety facility. We have the park maintenance facility. Under the mobility authorization, we have the construction of Waterfall Drive. Under the public safety authorization, we have renovation of Fire Station One. And under the Fire Station authorization, we have the design and construction of Fire Station Number Six. Again, the total amount for those projects are seven-point-four million dollars approximately. We also have a refunding of our Series 2010A bonds in the amount of approximately five-point-six million dollars, which is estimated to provide a net present value savings of approximately five-hundred-seventy-four thousand dollars, or ten percent.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Quick, quick statement, or can you please confirm these are previous year's year bonds? But these are all the projects that were approved during that bond period, correct? The projects didn't change, long story short.
I do not believe the projects have changed. The authorizations were, the projects are within the authorizations. So, there are different topics like drainage improvement, public safety, mobility and transportation, Fire Station Six. So, they are within.
Okay, just, go ahead. So, I just wanted to confirm, because, you know, some of this is from years back. So, I just want to let the public know that these are previous projects that we said we would do. Even though it's, some of this is years and years later.
2003.
So, just wanted you to confirm that those were the projects that were identified. Okay, any other questions? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eleven A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, nominating a candidate for election to a position on the Board of Directors of the Harris County Appraisal District, for the two-year term commencing on January 1st, 2020, and other provisions, per, forgive me, and other provisions related thereto.
Mayor and city council, this is an opportunity for council to consider nominating a candidate for the Harris County Central Appraisal District. At this time, Mike Sullivan is the only candidate who requested to be nominated for his current position on the board.
Mayor, I called Mike today and introduced myself and asked that he reach out to you eventually so that we can build a good relationship together. Asked if he had any concerns or questions or feedback from, you know, some Harris County neighbors. He did not. But I make the motion to reelect or reselect Mr. Sullivan.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution in nominating Mike Sullivan to the Board of Directors of the Harris County Appraisal District?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Eleven B.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, nominating one or more candidates for election to one or more positions on the Board of Directors of the Fort Bend Central Appraisal District for the two-year term commencing on January 1st, 2020, and other provisions related thereto.
Mayor and city council, this is an opportunity for you to consider nominating candidates to serve on the Fort Bend Central Appraisal District. At this time, we have three members who agree to continue their service should council wish to nominate them. They're referenced here as Jim Key, Paul.
Just I might be.
Okay, and Al.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution nominating Jim, Paul, and Al?
I make a motion to approve those three candidates.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
And if I may, before you move on to the next item, there are two additional openings as well for council to nominate folks.
And we, we, the city did not receive additional nominations. So, this is just an opportunity, if you have someone else that you wouldn't want to nominate, this is your opportunity to nominate them.
Okay. Is, do we have to nominate them? Do they get a vote?
No, this is just if you have anyone else that's not listed.
Okay.
Just like we received a letter from Mike Sullivan. He's the only one we received. In this case, we did not receive anybody else who was interested. But if you have someone in mind, this would be an opportunity to bring them up.
Okay. All righty.
Maria, are there any restrictions as to who you can nominate as far as what their profession?
Let me see, the, the Fort Bend, see what they put on their letter. Their letter doesn't say much, only that the city is, the governing body may adopt by resolution and nominate candidates to serve. The Harris County letter gave a little bit more information on the requirements to serve. The Harris, Fort Bend didn't give us those additional requirements, but I'm assuming it would have to be Fort Bend County resident, you know, Missouri City. Is that what you're asking?
Well, yeah, I want to know if there were any restrictions as to what type of profession, if they weren't, if they were a lawyer, could they serve? Or if they were a realtor, you know, I'm just saying as far as.
E Joyce, are you aware of any of those?
I'm not aware. I think there may have been some legislation, though, in this past session that did restrict professions of folks who serve. But I'm not aware of any right now. We can certainly take a look at that.
Do we have to make a decision on those two open positions tonight?
It would have to be by resolution, and the deadline to receive, to submit those nominations to the county is October 50th. So, we won't have another opportunity other than today.
But this is what you requested at our last meeting?
The last meeting, it was for council to, if you have anybody in mind that you would want to nominate, to submit those names to me. At that time, there was a deadline that was given, and Councilmember Emery was the only one who expressed, you know, to just nominate the current members who wanted to continue serving. I didn't receive any other requests.
Okay.
Anybody in the audience?
All righty. So, eleven C.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, approving and ratifying the submission of a grant application for the Gulf State's Regional Law Enforcement Technology Assistance Program to the United States Department of Justice to fund the purchase of a video surveillance security system, and containing other provisions related thereto.
Good evening, mayor and council. We are requesting to apply for a grant through the U.S. Department of Justice in the amount approximately of one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which would go towards the operation of a camera system in Buffalo Run Park. It would include an ALPR, which is an automatic license plate reader at the entrance to the park, as well as numerous other cameras, including 360 cameras that could capture the entire view of the park.
Is this a hundred percent grant?
Yes. With no match required.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
City council announcements. Mayor Protem?
Nothing, mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
No, ma'am.
Council, Councilmember Emery?
We had a good session with the AARP. Over the 3081, I believe, was the chapter this afternoon. So, it was great to, to hear some of the, the concerns, and we were able to tell the folks what we had in store. So, I thought it went well. And it was fairly, I think fairly well attended. So, it was very good.
Councilmember Boni?
Man, it was a busy week. National Night Out was wonderful. I always hate I can't hit every subdivision. There's just so much you can do in two hours. But the great people that I got an opportunity to connect with, talk to, and, you know, the excitement that people have about the future of Missouri City is grand, and so I'm excited about that. Of course, I got the opportunity to bring greetings on behalf of the city at the Leadership Now Symposium Kickoff Breakfast on Thursday, I want to say it was. And that was, that was wonderful as well. And then lastly, Community Night Out was a great way to end the week on Saturday. Great turnout. A lot of people were excited to be there together, enjoying one another's company fellowship and meeting their neighbors. And so, it was just a great affair. And so, thank you, city staff, for all that you do.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes, I have plenty, and I agree, there are a lot of things. So, first of all, Whataburger's open on Highway Six in front of Target. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to celebrate with the community at the Pursue Your Passion Art Project. Got to meet the artist Taft, who did a wonderful job. For those who've not seen that project, I advise you guys go by and check it out. Several grand openings, Sharp Mine Academy, Wishbone Pet Care, who's very, very instrumental with our shelter. I had a re-grand opening. Suites in the Sky, which is next to the movie theater, had a cake decorating contest, and I was honored to be a cake contest judge. And congratulations to Matty and Sienna, who won that contest. Also, the president of the World Mali Ali Foundation was in town. Had an opportunity to tour him around the city to attend several grand openings. And he stayed at Holiday Inn and partook in our city. And then finally, thanks to Chief Campbell and the firemen who went to LCE, Lexington Creek Elementary, to participate in safety patrol assistance. The kids loved it. They gave them high fives on Friday, and it was a great night. And that's it.
Councilmember Pearson?
Well, I can say it was a busy week for me also. I had an opportunity on Tuesday for National Night Out. I want to thank the HOAs that I had the opportunity to visit. Got a chance to celebrate, break my birthday with them on that evening. Saturday, Community Night Out, but I might want to give a shout out to Thurgood Marshall. I was in their homecoming parade on Saturday morning. So, that was a lot of fun, and they really enjoyed it. Just want to say thank you to the staff on Tuesday. I know that the officers and the firemen and everybody else. It was a long day for everyone, but everybody did well. And I just want to say kudos and keep up the good work. And also want to commend the city manager and Sadie and staff for Community Night Out. It was an awesome event, as it has always been. And it was a long day for everyone on that day. So, I just want to say kudos and keep up the good work on that also.
Well, I'm going to say ditto, or I'm going to take the next twenty minutes and repeat everything you guys are saying. Just kidding. I do want to say thank you to staff and all the residents for coming out.